Good morning, I'd like to welcome everyone to the January 8th, 2025 workshop meeting of the Dolphin County Board of Commissioners. I would ask that we observe a moment of silence prior to the start of the flag. We had lost a county employee over the holiday, and I would ask that you remember him and his family as we observe that moment of silence.
Lest allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just so everybody's aware, we are being live streamed today. So for those of you who are here for the first time, we are on camera and everything you say today will be a part of a live stream broadcast of the Dolphin County Board of Commissioners. We have the approval of meeting minutes that will be taken up next week, the December 18th, 2024 Legislative Meeting Minutes, and the December 18th, 2024 Salary Board Meeting Minutes. Any questions related to meeting minutes? Hearing none. Executive sessions held between meetings. Mr. Peace?
Good morning, Commissioners. There were two executive sessions held between meetings. On December 20th, the Commissioners held an executive session to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding the consideration on the sale and lease of real property, RFP processes, board appointments, county contractors, and matters of personnel. On January 6th, the Commissioners held an executive session to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding RFP processes, board appointments, and county contractors.
Any questions for Mr. Peace? Hearing none. This is the first opportunity we have for public participation on agenda items only. Is there anybody today on agenda item only that wish to participate or make comment in front of the Board of Commissioners?
Morning Commissioners. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Pamela Parsons, Holly Street in the city of Harrisburg. It's just a general comment on the matters requiring Board action today. Since we're starting a new year, I'd again like to encourage you to be, to link the things that are on your agenda. I would really like to know what number one is, the partial release of the mortgage and the intercreditor and subordination agreement executed in 2020. I don't know what that is. So I can't really speak to it, nor can anyone else who isn't one of you up here. I would just like the opportunity to be able to do that. Additionally, I would like to just say to you all that I see on here Resolution 1 of 2025, raising the minimum wage to $16 an hour. That is definitely something that needs to happen. And just this morning, I heard a report, one of the states out west where they raised the minimum wage for caregivers, in-home caregivers, a few years ago. And they found that when they did that, the turnover rates in those positions dropped. And so they are now again looking at the economic situation, economic indicators, and are deciding that they need to bump that up again because it worked so well across the state in maintaining in-home caregivers in their jobs. Thank you.
Makes sense. Thank you. Any other comments on agenda items only?
I didn't know that it was only agenda items only. I thought it was like asked when, asked when you could speak of anything for three minutes.
We actually give an opportunity to do that at the end of the meeting? Yet the first part of public comment is for any kind of public comment related to things that are being considered in front of the Board. Yep. Any other individuals that want to speak related to agenda items only? All right. Directors and guests, human resources, Ms. Whedon? Good morning.
For the personnel packet, if I can get an approval on items 47 through 50.
Yes, and you can agree that's very good with us. Those are all prison matters. I'd entertain a motion to adopt items 47 through 50 on today's personnel packet. I will take the motion by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Breeze. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. Thank you, Denise. All right, Director of Budget and Finance, Mr. Davis? Good morning.
I have no changes to the purchase order packet that was distributed yesterday. I'm going to be ready for your view and approval next week.
Any questions for Mr. Davis? Anything on the purchase order packet? Thank you.
Thank you.
Solicitors' report, Ms. Owens.
Chief Clerk's report.
I'm sorry.
I have nothing to report.
Mr. Peace?
Unless there are questions of me.
Anything for Mr. Peace? Solicitor's report, Ms. Owens.
Thank you, Commissioner. Four items requiring Board action today. They have been reviewed and vetted by the Solicitor's Office. I understand there may be a need to table number one on any discussion on that item.
Is it your recommendation that we table item number one?
I think based on the questions and the complexity of the transaction, I think that's a good idea.
I entertain a motion to table item one on today's agenda. Motion's been made. Second to table item one. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. Anything additional from Mr. Owens?
Nothing further. Thank you.
All right, training packet. I don't believe there's any items we need to act on in the training packet today. There are matters that are requiring Board action. Now items two through four are there any, first of all, is there a motion for items two through four?
So moved.
Motion made. Do we have second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I do want to make it clear that on number two, Mr. Peace is our alternate correct for hats. And so that is a, an interim appointment as we as the Board determine who we're going to have in that process. And part of what we're considering is, as we have many Board vacancies right now, opening up a countywide application process for people to be able to apply to all of these Board opportunities so that we can really research and find a qualified candidate in each space. And so that might take some time. So I want to thank Vince for stepping into that role in, in that way. So thank you for that.
And I believe the next Hatz meeting is on the 28th of February. So hopefully we will prioritize that application process following today and ensure that we have that consideration made prior to the next Board. But in the case we don't, Vince will be the alternate, the, the member, the interim appointment.
The, the other comment I had is on the memorandum of understanding between the YWCA, Greater Harrisburg. This just is something that, one thing I've, I've had some individuals reach out to me about is questions of just more accountability to this agreement. And I think this is an opportunity to work collaboratively with all of our stakeholders to make sure the services are being provided. I don't know if Randy wants to come share just a quick little clip about that. I think this memorandum of understanding creates an opportunity for us to talk about how all the services are being used in a collaborative way to support one another. And so, yeah, maybe you could share to that just real quick.
Sure. This is actually a federal Department of Justice grant, and it's actually a collaboration at the state level between the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, the Pennsylvania Coalition Against Rape, the Pennsylvania Coalition Against Domestic Violence with the YWCA. So this is an opportunity for local referrals to be made to the Y that will be funded by this grant. And anytime there's a new grant and a new MOU, it's a great time to sit down and work out process improvement and how we can ensure there are, these resources are being used locally.
I appreciate that. And that's just something I wanted to make sure there was a commitment to ensuring that the process is kind of refreshed, restarted, or renewed in a sense. So thank you for your commitment to that. I'm in support of that. And obviously, I'm excited that we're, have a resolution today to raise minimum wage to $16 an hour.
Any other comments? Hearing none, I would take a vote on items two through four today. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. Former business. Is there any former business that the Board has? Commissioners' comments. Commissioner Douglas.
Yes, Happy New Year, everyone. Today, we passed a resolution raising county worker minimum wage to $16 an hour, just moments ago. A decision we as a Board, I think, can take a lot of pride in. You know, the meaningful commitment this is making to our workforce, I think, is really important. And I want to consider it just through the lens of one full-time employee who's here, who in 2024 earned 1260 an hour. That same employee will now, is now, earning $16 an hour. And that's an increase of $3.40 an hour. That's, that equates to $136 per week. It equates to just over $7,000 a year before taxes. That wage increase is incredibly significant for that one employee. And, and I believe this, this particular minimum wage increase touched, I think it was 96 employees. So I, I, I think we as a Board should take great pride in, in, in setting this basement, if you will, but we also need to continue to look at the ways in which from the basement to the ceiling, wage equity can be improved throughout the county. And so while this is a vital step forward, reflecting our dedication, I think, as a Board, yeah, our work isn't done. Our work cannot stop here. And so for those who see this as a finish line, I, I, I see this much more as a, as a continuance of, of our commitment to our workforce and, and our ability to honor their contribution to Dolphin County and to retain and recruit the best employees here. That's what we want. We want the best and brightest here who are willing and able to serve. So I just wanted to thank my colleagues for their commitment to that and, and certainly thank the community for those of you who have been championing minimum wage increase for our county workers. And certainly, and most importantly, thank our workers for those of which who have, who have worked here for many years and, and are, and are seeing this compensation now. I'm, I'm thankful for the ways in which they've stuck with us and are being honored now. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank Commissioner Douglas for his passion around the issue. And again, as we rethink how we move forward in county government, as we said, restructuring, just because it's been done this way is, is probably the worst phrase in the English language to hear as we move forward. The idea of how we repurpose, reestablish those frontline positions that, quite frankly, are extraordinarily difficult to fill and develop a professional pathway for individuals to be able to not only succeed and excel and gain the ability to become in a supervisory and a management role. I believe there should be sort of the restructuring of workload because I don't think at the frontline levels, based upon even the human service agencies and minimum education and training requirements, as we've changed the rules, you know, sort of even got rid of degree requirements, it's still difficult to fill these jobs based upon what the federal and state reimbursement requires. And, and I believe we need to really rethink how we begin to provide these services and offer that pathway. So creating an opportunity to move up and make this a career is something that I believe we need to ensure the Dolphin County begins to rethink and revision our government to be. So Commissioner Breeze?
Thank you, Chairman Hartwick. Happy New Year, everyone. Looking forward to a great and prosperous 2025 on behalf of the residents of the county. I am not the longest-serving Commissioner on this Board. That distinction goes to my colleague, Commissioner Hartwick, who has served for 21 years and is the longest-serving Commissioner in the history of Dolphin County. However, I am the only current member of this Board who has served in all three roles: Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Secretary. Had the privilege of serving as Chairman for two years, Vice Chairman for Had the privilege of serving as chairman for two years, vice chairman for eleven, and secretary in twenty twenty four. I have seen what has worked and I have seen what has not worked. And I want to say thank you to Commissioner Hartwick for his service this past year as chairman of the Board of Commissioners. That is not an easy job. In fact, I motioned for you to serve in that role, and I was one of two votes to put you in that role. As we begin twenty twenty five, the second year of our four-year terms, I look back upon an entire year where there was a reoccurring disconnect among this Board of Commissioners. On many occasions, my colleague, Commissioner Douglas, personally requested that we be included in discussions and decisions and that all items be vetted with a full board prior to being placed on the agenda. As my colleague has pointed out throughout the past year, he was not updated over and over and again, did not know what the agenda items meant, even times when it fell within his own oversight department. I look back at the past five months with no plan communicated to me for the county engineer after it was publicly stated by this board that we would RFP everything. We are now in January twenty twenty five with still no plan having been presented to me. I look back at the past five months with no plan communicated to me with the process will be to select a new healthcare provider. Even after the debacle that forced us to go to a fourth year provision, which means we now have to start the process all over again, wasting valuable staff time. This is supposed to be a government of, by, and for the people. But when two of the three commissioners elected by the people feel that they've been left out of the process, something has to change. So one of two things can happen. We can either sit here and allow the same things to reoccur over and over again, expecting a different result, but we know what that's the definition of. Or we can make a change. And I, as one county commissioner, am ready to try something new. I am making a motion for the reorganization of the Dauphin County Board of Commissioners for twenty twenty five. Justin Douglas, chairman; Mike Pries, vice chairman; George P. Hartwick, the third secretary.
I'll second.
I would turn to the solicitor and ask, based upon not being able to advertise, I want to ensure that we are making sure we're meeting all the legal requirements, which may require a recess.
I'm going to ask for a recess. I'll need to research this quickly. I'll make a motion to recess.
I'll second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. So we will come back into the meeting at ten twenty eight on our workshop meeting agenda. And if I could call on the solicitor, based upon the quick executive session we had to report out.
Well, I'll report out the executive session that was held today, January eighth, between the commissioners and with counsel from the Solicitor's Office regarding the reorganization of Dauphin County's Board of Commissioners.
It's the solicitor's opinion that you cannot do this today. You will have to put this on the agenda when you want to. It sounds like it will be on next week's agenda and has to be advertised under the Sunshine Act and the recent amendments.
I'll make a motion that we put this agenda item on the next Board of Commissioners meeting for action. Although I do believe that it could have been done today, in my opinion, but I'm not in favor. I will second that with the same opinion that I believe reorganization is not, is not under necessarily the Sunshine Act. But that's only what I'm being told by others, so.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
I'll abstain.
All right, is there any additional commissioners' comments? Commissioner Breeze? Well, in light of what I have just found out a couple of minutes ago, I'm, you know, I was the same yesterday than I am today and I will be tomorrow. The idea of, you know, service and leadership is not about a position or a title. It's about a passion and a faith and an opportunity to be able to serve the public, which has entrusted me to do so. And from my perspective, I've effectively served at multiple roles. I have obviously done that both here at the state, at the national level, and representing counties across the Commonwealth. And I will always hold myself with class and dignity and a high regard and ensure that I do my best to contribute to this board, however it chooses to reshape itself. So from my perspective, there will be no change in effort, outcome, or interest because my interests are always placed secondary to those of the people that we serve. So from my perspective, although being a bit shocking, I'm certainly here to be able to serve the public in a way that provides that same level of distinction. And that's not proven by what you say. It's proved by a record of public service that I'm extraordinarily proud of that will continue at that level. So with that, obviously, I hope on all levels, communication would increase. And, you know, there's always concerns that I have related to legalities, process, institutional knowledge, history, and things that we need to ensure that we are adhering to as this board continues to move forward and will continue when sought after to provide that level of guidance to ensure we're meeting all of the levels of the law and compliance that we need to in order to take official action in the best interest of those we serve. So you will not see any change from my perspective related to my efforts. And I just feel, you know, you figure you work with people over the course of time, you would be given the opportunity to know about things in advance. And actually, I could have led the charge because I made this comment in open public meeting where I said, in many cases, I got more done as a secretary and I wasn't the guy who was being blamed for everything that goes wrong. And quite frankly, I still won't play that role of being a negative sideshow individual. And here's what I will tell you. I think the things that Commissioner Douglas has been able to do throughout the course of the year has allowed us to clear the air and to actually better serve our constituents in a way that I think will allow this board to step forward with both feet in order to meet those opportunities. But what I would challenge you not to do, we're going to have to make some serious decisions in many cases. And doing that is going to require significant criticism. And, you know, I would ask that our board figure out a way to communicate and vet these issues in a responsible way to ensure that we've got those answers to the questions as we step forward in public. And, you know, the idea of shaping a new lobbyist, the idea of shaping some new business partners and good government, I think, is a really, really good foot for Dauphin County. And I look forward to being a participant on this team, as I have been on previous teams. But also know that, you know, the idea of the way that these things are done, you should also do with a level of class and dignity. And you would find that that would be returned to you in tenfold. So from my perspective, I think this could have been done a whole lot more tactfully. And I've even said it willfully as a part of this board, that I'm willing to play whatever role we can get to get to the finish line to best serve our population in public. So we don't have to play gotcha. We don't have to play for the media. Now that we're on TV, we should be playing for the residents with everything we do and every decision we make for their best interest. So that's the commitment you have for me, you've had for me, and you will have for me in this role. So with that, I would entertain, or we have a public comment. Mr. Stilpe has been waiting for some time to have public comment. This is the first time for public comment following the meeting.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Just want to start by saying Happy New Year and also very sorry to hear about the death of the county employee. That's tragic. I know how fast people come along four forty-three and also especially on getting off three twenty-two. So what a tragedy up there. Very sad, very sad. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. And you have copies of my comments here. I'll make it the three minutes. This is a statement of Gene Stilpe, director. No TMI restart before the Dauphin County Commissioners on this date. Thank you for this three-minute opportunity to speak to you, Dauphin County Commissioners, this morning. My message is simple. No TMI restart. We are not Constellation Energy and Microsoft slaves. At some point, the burden of evacuation planning will again be laid at the door, if it hasn't already, of the county. You will be directed to line up Dauphin County residents for cooperation in a Dauphin County evacuation plan. The question today is, or who is such an evacuation plan being prepared? It would be prepared so that such a plan would pass muster for the nuclear. It would be prepared so that such a plan would pass muster for the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, so they could license TMI again, but for who? Let's look deeper. It isn't for the citizens of central Pennsylvania, it's for the gigantic corporations, Constellation and Energy and Microsoft and Microsoft. All the energy goes to Microsoft for its its out of area data centers. Our bottom line is this, the citizens of Pennsylvania, central Pennsylvania, are not Constellation Energy and Microsoft slaves. We won't take any risk for Microsoft and Constellation Energy. Forget about the pros and cons of nuclear energy, it's about the citizens being treated like slaves. We have been there before, we've been there from nineteen seventy four to nineteen seventy nine, from nineteen eighty five to twenty nineteen, we have taken our turn. Key to safe living is to avoid things that you really do not have to do. It's best to mitigate the time spent at actions you do not that do not benefit you. The best preparation for emergency action is to mitigate the threat. No reopening of Three Mile Island goes a long, a long way toward avoiding an avoidable amount of actions. Years ago, the Shore Plant on Long Island never was able to open because all the because the emergency planning plan did not work. The people said no. They said no and would not cooperate. Years ago, in the early eighties, the residents of Long Island defeated the Shore Plant by not cooperating with the emergency planning process. Utility said they could evacuate Long Island, common sense told everyone they were nuts. Please, plans approved on paper like like Constellation has now are good, but they're little resemble or excuse me, look good, but they're little resembles to reality. Just trying to evacuate Dolphin County on a winter day like two days ago. Winter storm, dangerous highways, no way. Evacuation is basically impossible. We're urging complete noncooperation with Constellation and Microsoft plans. Besides, if Microsoft and Bill Gates with one hundred eighty, one hundred six, eight, one hundred eighty six billion dollars walk in here and offer Dolphin County a billion dollars to play the game, the Constellation, no. Does Dolphin County get any of the federal one point six billion dollars, our tax money that the federal government is giving to Constellation Energy? No. If they want to play, where is the pay? Where's a chunk of bucks for every citizen in a ten mile evacuation zone? You just raise taxes, a couple of hundred million dollars, mature help relieve taxes in the county. When they bought the politicians already from campaign contributions, politicians sell us, will can sell us out at any minute. Constellation and Microsoft are two businesses. How many businesses are in the county really don't want to be required to evacuation plan? Who wants to take the risk of their business being extinguished? No one I know. If you look at the current evacuation plan, places like nursing homes, prisons, hospitals, daycare centers, high rises, for example, are not even mentioned. The nuclear army depot with twenty serves which serves twenty three forward bases is impossible to evacuate. But what of all the supplies that are needed around the world, talking about a threat to national security?
Try to wrap it up, Mr. Stilpe.
There will be, what's that?
Where your three minutes.
Three minutes, it'll take about ten seconds here. There'll be more discussion on this as the year goes by, start to think about your options. Just say no to restart and your problems go away. No fake plans, no fake drills and no fake commitments. Besides, there are already seven hundred metric tons of nuclear waste there. There's not even any place to put any more waste. N R C S repeatedly broke, repeatedly broke its promise, the residents there and the waste that the waste will be removed. Still, we have it forever. And finishing, the authorities are finally catching up corruption in the county government via the news I hear. Maybe it's time for the big one. Maybe it's time for the county to extort Constellation and Microsoft to take the big bucks. All the people's property taxes problem solved by the creativity of your commissioners. Time to extort Constellation and Microsoft for big, big money. That's tongue in cheek, of course, but anyhow, the bottom line is this, okay? Microsoft and Constellation may put out a few signs to say the Safe Energy Center down there, but we know the history of Three Mile Island, we are not going back.
Thank you, Mr. Stilpe. Any additional public comment?
Happy New Year's, Commissioners. My name is Bono Salo of Swatir Township. I want to say I am actually kind of grateful today to see some courage up here on this stage. I've been coming to these meetings for six, seven, eight, nine months now, every Wednesday faithfully. And every Wednesday is the same issue of commissioners being left out of county processes when we're already in a time of finding out that there's a potential corruption in the county. It's been pretty disheartening as a as a citizen to watch this happen. And I just want to say thank you to Commissioner Pries for having the courage to come up here and do this today and ask for a reorganization so that the county can get back to the work it needs to do. You guys have repeatedly said you're here for transparency and it's just like time we get that. Also, Commissioner Hartwick, I heard you say that you being up here, nothing is going to change and that is the problem. We've repeatedly been asked for change by both of the other commissioners up here and the public. And if nothing is going to change, then you can't get back to doing the work of the public. I know you want to fix your mouth to say something to me right now, but.
I think what you represented is nothing will change. I said with me, my motives will not change.
You said, roll the tape.
My personal, I said, I was the same yesterday as I will be today, as I will be tomorrow, with the best public interest being my number one priority. That's that's what I said.
So it is not lost on me that you are going to overtalk me and use what little power you have left to interrupt my public comment. But I'm going to reclaim my time. I'm just really grateful that there is a Commissioner Douglas up here who is willing to do what he said he was going to. It's my public comment, who is willing to do.
You're not going to continue point your finger and disrespecting them. You're not going to do that.
I'm sorry, but what is disrespectful is if a member of the public is trying to make public comment and you continually interrupt.
I did not.
You have Commissioner's comment, which was your time to talk. Now, this is my time to talk. So I'm going to finish. I am happy to have Commissioner Douglas up here who has the courage to do what he said he was going to do when he ran for office, to fight for transparency and do what needs done for the people of Dolphin County. And I am happy that he has been able to hold you accountable when you don't do what you are supposed to be doing. And I am thankful today, Commissioner Pries, for you standing up here and asking for a change of who is in charge and being willing to do so and not even saying I should be in charge. Saying I think Commissioner Douglas has the courage and should be in charge. And I am hopeful that this amount of cooperation between these two commissioners will be able to get stuff done in this county. Thank you.
Good morning, New Year Commissioners. Tom Connolly, three forty five North Harrisburg Street, Swatir Township. We saw on the agenda, there was a temporary appointment to the HATs position. I'm assuming that's a position that former Commissioner Haste held. And in the past, many years ago, I came before this board when Commissioner Haste was the chair and expressed interest in serving on boards, commissions, decision making groups here. And was basically told that we have our people and they're set and some are going to auto renew in their lifetime positions. And I'm asking that you take a look at that. You know, we've had some allegations, hopefully, you know, not going to rise to potential public corruption, criminal prosecutions and arrests. But it seems like we're we're moving in that direction with some of the things that have been revealed in the last couple of months. If a person, a few people or a group of people had that power, I think you need to look at the other boards, maybe department heads, maybe positions here that they also had influence in. Because from what we've seen, week after week, for the last couple of months, there's been a lot of power exerted by people who were not elected by the public. And a lot of the same names are showing up. So I don't think there's going to be a quick fix replacing, you know, possibly the the positions and the control that consultant Musser had or former Chairman Haste. I think they're going to have other people embedded. It's kind of like two dominos fall and a row of dominos, maybe the rest of them need to go down too. The action today, I will say, I don't know the the current law or or the county's law, but I'll speed this up. I was on the Board of Commissioners in Swatir Township. And in the middle of a year, in June, there was a motion made to remove the president, ours is the president of the board. That was done at a public meeting during the commissioner's comments. And then the vice president was removed and put in. And no one was removed from the board, the board reorganized. And it's my personal feeling that the board was better from that point on and worked together. And there is a role for everybody. Having said that, I think it takes brave, strong people to take actions. This was a big action. I don't know that anything's personal, reorganizing and trying to to do better is is in the best interest of everybody. And not not even saying that it it had to be bad or absolutely required. But, you know, I I appreciate the fact that two commissioners voted on it. And and I understand the the chair's position to to make sure it's the right thing to do. And and I don't think a week is is the end of the world. But but I do know that it has been done at the municipal level right in public at a meeting. So Happy New Year, everybody. Thank you for the time.
Good morning, for the second time. Pamela Parson, City of Harrisburg. I'm going to start out first with some thanks and also start my remarks with Commissioner Hartwork. I heard you say because, because we've always done it that way, isn't an excuse to keep doing it that way. So first of all, I would like to thank you, all of you, for raising the county minimum wage. That was an important step and a courageous thing to do. I would also like to thank you for live streaming these meetings. That was an important step. I've been coming to these meetings for almost a year. And when I first started coming, they were not live streamed and were rarely attended by members of the public. And now there are more people who come to the meetings, there are more people who watch them. And that is an important step towards transparency. I would also like to thank you for live streaming the gaming grants. Although I didn't know that they had started until I read the newspaper this morning. So all of those things are huge gains for the public. But what I've heard thus far about the gaming grant hearing livestream is that the camera angles are bad and that the sound is bad. So it's great that you're live streaming them, but this is twenty twenty five. And we know how to do this now and we know how to do it right. So it needs to be done correctly. Secondly, there is the issue of advertising. Now, the authority and the county and all of the quasi governmental agencies and boards advertise meeting the legal requirements under the Sunshine Act. However, while they're meeting the letter of the law, they are not meeting the spirit of the law. And hearings and meetings need to be advertised in a way that the public can either attend those meetings or know when to tune into those meetings. And you can sit up here all day long and talk about transparency and public participation. But if the access isn't there and isn't in a way that the public can actually access it, it means nothing. If we cannot on an agenda be able to access the, I heard the beep, access the the legislation, the contracts, the reports that should be public, not talking about HIPAA or personnel manner matters, but the reports that should be public. If we cannot access them, then again, we really have no way of actually knowing if you're transparent. And my final comment is, I am not buying into, no matter who it is, whether it is a commissioner or the former owner of Prime Care. I cannot write off things that are done behind closed doors by simply saying, well, look at all the good he's done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parson. One thing I just want to make clear is that I I don't believe unless it's something I was unaware of that the county is necessarily live streaming those that's being done by the IDA. And so I I believe that would, that concern, I will relay that to the IDA. And certainly you have the ability to relay that to the IDA, what your expectations are for their streaming. And I know we have an affiliation with them. I think we're still working out exactly what that means. Because it seems as if when it favors to be independent, they're independent. When it favors to be collaborative with us, they're collaborative with us. And I think we need, we're we're working to understand legally what that relationship is and what authorities we have. For example, to compel them to livestream, or is that a decision they have to make on their own? Those are all things that I think our solicitor's office is currently looking into. And so we want to ensure that, at least I want to ensure that transparency and and accessibility to those meetings and gaming especially is is had.
I found out this morning that you have to actually email someone to get a copy of the days of Jeff.
Okay.
Any other public comments? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn and we will go into our retirement board at eleven AM.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, meeting adjourned.